That really doesn't matter because if we're cutting funding, the department head has to decide how to use that funding within the department. He has to give increases to the people that stay, whatever department, but you can have less people who need the budget. So nothing's sacred. No, no. If you have a budget of, I don't know, $400,000 and you have a union contract that says everybody's getting a 2% wage increase, you have to follow the union contract, give them a 2% wage increase. But if you have to cut $40,000, then you look at your staffing saying, okay, I'm gonna have one less staff member. Everybody that stays will get the increase under the contract. So you're not breaking any contracts, you're not going against contract. You're just taking a cut like everybody else. And to say that because it's a union contract, we can't touch a department, I don't think is fair across the board. Let me back up. I don't think the whole budget's fair because I think we're hurting people. But I think if we're gonna do it, we need to be fair across the board and not single out certain people. That's my comment.
My, I'm not disagreeing with you, John, but my feeling is, department heads know more so than we do as a group where they best can cut and function to survive the following 12 months of the next year. If you don't allow them to do their expertise and put the money where it's gonna do the greatest good in a lean budget like this, I think we're defeating the purpose of department heads. Department heads, they know their budget, they know what they have to try to get for goals and expectations. And now it's gonna be even harder too. But I do believe we have to have confidence on our department heads to make the cuts appropriately. So it's deemed where it will get the most bang for our buck. And I agree with you with the fairness, but sometimes this whole budget is not fair.
I agree with that.
You know, I'm sorry, but I do think if we're gonna survive, we have to try to accomplish some of our goals, and our department's heads are gonna be the best to do that, and we should leave the money to them where it's gonna go and do the greatest good. That's my comment.
I think we should be clear about letting them know that we expect them to look at everything, including themselves.
I agree with that. I don't, I think that we should, I think as the Board of Selectmen, we give each department the amount of money that we're able to give them, and their department heads for a reason, and they're able to manage that money and budget that money, and I don't think that, given all of the cuts that they've made already and all the sacrifices that they've made already, that we should, on top of that, say, and you have to take a pay cut. I think that they know best where their money is spent, and chances are, they're gonna be the ones that pick up the slack for all of the services that they just cut. And I guess I just, I disagree. I don't think that they should even...
That's fine. I mean, I think we all agree the whole budget is way too low, but... Okay. That's all I have on that one.
Chief, did you have, we just finished the police department piece, but did you have anything to add?
Has anything changed?
No.
That you know about? And I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Alrighty. So that's the police department. We just wrapped up. Let's see if we can go down some more small things down at the bottom. We have the, let's see, administrative assistant wages, so the position that assists me in the office is only gonna be about half as what it was before. So we'll cut down some fees there. Uh, let's see. Uh, the town accountant, let's see, that's not there. If you go somewhere along here, assistant accountant wages, all the way up at the top, it says $17,479. That's a cut to the assistant accountant wages. That actually means that Joyce will be taking one furlough day a month in order to help with that reduction. The treasurer collector wages, this is for the two folks who work in that office as well. They're dropped down to $47,000, so it's the same thing there. Town clerk assistant wages, same gig, there'll be a furlough day somewhere involved, $16,695. On the next page...
David, can you just go back?
Yep.
Because the finance committee, especially with new members, the reserve funds being cut from 35 to 10.
Yes.
Okay. So you're only getting $10,000, and that's where everybody goes towards the end of the year. So we've just gotta make it clear, there's no more, no more going there.
No. Well, we didn't, if you notice, what we've done in a lot of these things is, a lot of departments had the good idea where, if they have something that's coming up in three years, where they have, we have an OPEB study, or we have a triennial evaluation, we would start putting money aside every year, and in three years, we'd have enough money. So we'd put $4,000 aside this year, $4,000 aside next year, $4,000 aside the year after, and then you have enough to pay for the study. This year, we don't have enough money to do that. We don't have the extra to be able to put that money aside. We don't have the money to put the money in the savings account. So even with the reserve account, we don't have the money to put the money aside. If you continue down there, there's a lot of small departments here. I don't know if there's any other ones the Board of Selectmen wishes me... Oh, we've already been through the fire department EMS and general discussion, but if there's anything else you wish me to discuss, I'm happy to.
Could you just comment on the school textbooks, just in a few years?
I don't know. It's always been zero.
It's always been zero.
No, it used to be 18. I don't know why it's always been 18.
Yeah.
Oh.
First year, zero.
Vicky here?
Yeah.
Vicky's not here.
I think it hasn't been spent in the past.
Oh, I don't know.
No.
No, in the past, well, according to the town account, because we went over that, it was in there, and Mr. Kilsen, who was a company before, would transfer in the last at least three or four years, money at the end of the year, not for books or anything. Books weren't really taken out of that account, is what the information she gave us. It was miscellaneous stuff, and then there was one whole year that none of it was spent out of there. So I think the books were being bought out of the general school budget.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the plumbing one certainly.
Yeah.
It's still shared an $18,000 balance in the last support that was included.
Right. And that, last year wasn't spent.
Is this a time for a question?
John, you have a question for me so early?
I'm wondering, this is my third time, and I know I'm late, I'm sorry, but is, is the same scrutiny on the revenue side, and is there a handoff for that? So how is it that we got where we are from a revenue? Now, it's two sides to a body, right? The money you get and the money you spend. Is there, is there the same scrutiny on that? Because that becomes part of the selling when you're talking about overrides. Here's how we got where we are, and here's what didn't come true that somehow came true in those other years.
At this very moment in time, I wasn't asked to look that closely into the revenue, but before we move forward with Prop 2 and 1/2, that's something we will add into our information. If you have a specific question, we could look into it for you, John.
I mean, I sort of do, right? Before you go forward with slash and burn, you might wanna give it the scrutiny because...
I, I believe they've already gone through it quite a bit. Donna, do you have any information on John's question?
I think the finance committee and Vicky had already come up with the revenue numbers based on cherry sheet projections and directed tech collections, and, you know, it's already been...
I'm not doubting that it does. I'm just asking if there was...
The numbers we brought up the last couple of weeks were the numbers we put all together with the assessors and Donna and Vicky and all that.
Okay. So what's the, what's the miss on, on revenue?
Well, it was about a million dollars, a million eighty thousand we started off on budget. We'd really like to see our budgets at this level versus the revenue coming in.
Sure. So the, so the requests are what the requests were, but from a budget standpoint, is the income next year some number lower than it was last year?
No.
It's not lower, but it's the way we're funding it. You have to remember this, free cash last year was 377,000, this year is 68,000. So we have that much, we've gotten to the habit of spending free cash, and we've always said this could come back to bite us, and here we are.
Sure. That's what I wanted. So it's free cash, it's, what is it for get the cars?
New growth is down too, John.
Yeah, new growth, and what's the fourth one now?
The fire department, we took from the ambulance fund, 150,000 last year, we're taking 50 this year. So all those together came up to over half a million dollars.
And the other one was, that was always a big number, was vocational tuition.
Right, that one, a couple hundred thousand, I think.
I think it's, should be, at least I'm hearing kids have either received their acceptance letters, or they should have, so if that, that was a big number this year.
Eight hundred thirty thousand.
Years passed, like by a couple hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Seven hundred and ninety thousand.
So we should be watching to see if those numbers work.
So the request went up and the revenue collapsed.
Yeah.
John, you were on finance for years. I went back and looked at the budgets from 2005, what we funded. 2005 for this year's budget is 18% increase over 10 years, where gasoline prices have gone up 60%. So I think we're just seeing the type...
It's all caught up, yeah.
It's all caught up to this point where insurance...
I'm not arguing that there shouldn't be a correction. I'm just wondering if, if everything is well documented, so that when you go and make a case, you can, you can say, here's why, because that will be it.
I think it's just a combination of, sort of like you said, catching up to this point.
The other thing too, John, is budget busters are these fixed costs, which you're well aware of, like health insurance, retirement funds, these have gone up, school volk went up. These are things that we don't have any control of, and you have to have these in order to function.
Sure.
Any other questions? Yes?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Berry, prepared road. I just, I'm, there's these small little ones, but I don't know why. You could explain more.
Sure.
Like animal inspector salary, 3,000.
It's a stipend.
And then the, like, what's a health agent? What do they...
The health agent is our, okay.
And health expenses. I mean, that alone is like $40,000, so I'm just curious.
Sure. Our health inspector is required, works under the Board of Health, and the required, we're required to have one by law. If we do not have a health agent, what that means is we pay a monthly fine of a certain amount of money per month to cover the fact that we don't have one. I imagine that would mean that the state steps in or covers us in the meantime. Our health agent is the person, right now it's Adam Kinney. Kinney? Kinney? That's how you say his last name. Who is actually leaving us next week. It says last week, and he's leaving us for another job. But what he does is he goes out and he makes sure that all the restaurants you eat at are safe, that they're not serving you anything, you know, that they shouldn't be serving you, that everything is running up to code, and pretty much enforces Board of Health regulations. The amount he's being paid is already one of the lowest in the state. If we lower that anymore, we're afraid that we won't be able to get anyone to actually take the position itself. The health expenses are actually just mostly for their paperwork permits and, you know, mileage, so that they can go out of the office and actually go inspect the restaurants down the street, OPAOBA, et cetera, et cetera. The health administrative person, who actually split between two line items, it's split between the Board of Health and also split between the building inspector. That is one individual, it used to be Bianca. It's now, right now we just have an emergency fill-in person, but the position has been posted. It's only for about 18 hours a week, so it's only part-time. It doesn't cost us benefits. What this person does is they maintain all the records and files for both the Board of Health and the building commissioner, building inspector, however you'd like to put it, office, including, you know, gas and plumbing and electrical inspector. They take all the phone calls, do all the correspondence, and do all the paper and filing. They're actually one of the busiest two, two of the busiest offices in the entire town. They're, they just don't usually have enough time to keep up with all the stuff that's going on over there.
I'm just surprised that our town, how many restaurants do we have? It doesn't, it seems to be more of a regional sort of position than...
Yeah, but the other thing too is the building inspector, he has to go out and do all the septic tanks and inspections. It's not just the restaurants. He's gotta make sure if there's any code violations, he's gonna enforce them, he's gotta go to court. That's just some of the things that come off the top of my head, but...
Park tests.
Believe, believe me, if, of the $40,000 spending on him, if we were gonna save it, it would cost us a lot more to deal with the fines, and also having people, you know, getting sick. You know, all you need is one outbreak of hepatitis or something like that, it'd be a major issue.
Any other questions? Comments? Yes, ma'am.
I was gonna say, I think this is an example, but we need to stress to people in the town that a lot of, so-called hidden things that we must do mandated by the state, and I don't think people realize that, but this is a fine example. It's a health issue. It's an important, it's an important mandate. The state wouldn't have mandated it, but we're all responsible, and these are the expenses. And I think we, we need to talk about all of these things, that all, every department in the town, there are a lot of mandated things the state requires us to do. And, you know, we'd like to maybe, kind of propose to use more states if we can, because the state mandates it, so maybe you share that on Prop 2 and 1/2, what people want.
I think we're, we've seen 10 years of cutting, is what we're looking at.
Right.
I mean, it was one year we had a budget from one year to next year was minus 2%. The budget actually went down 2009, prior year. Any comments from finance? John, any other comments? Nope. All right, moving on, you wanna move on to the warrants?
Do you wanna move on to the Prop 2 and 1/2 budget?
Sure.
That would be a no, but I'd like to anyway.
All right.
All right. So we also prepared a second budget, which is the FY '15 Prop 2 and 1/2 budget, that's directly next to the first budget on your sheets. It's the one on the right. And this budget is based on the concept of having a proposition, 2 and 1/2 override vote, and the override vote passing at the amount of a million dollars. With the a million dollars, what we did is, based on prior discussions from the Board of Selectmen, the board had talked about, if this does pass, we need to be fiscally responsible, and we need to put money in our rainy day savings accounts. So we need to put money in our capital stabilization, our operating stabilization, and also put money in our OPEB, as were required. OPEB stands for, Donna?
Other post-employee benefits.
Which is our long-term retirement?
Retirement health insurance, basically.
Okay. So that is something that we sought to do. In doing so, we actually, before we started adding the extra money in, we took out 100,000 for capital, 100,000 for operating, and 40,000 for OPEB. We could have taken out more, but we would have had to make bigger cuts, and we tried to avoid those. So with the FY '15 Prop 2 and 1/2 budget, you see here, you know, essential numbers, the very bottom is the fixed numbers, same as before, anything under that deep dark line. And essentially, most of our cuts were very, you know, they were very minor. We tried to keep all of the salary increases, because one of the things we had talked about before is if we did in fact get the Prop 2 and 1/2 passed, that we'd wanna be able to at least provide the opportunity to the non-union employees to get the 2% increase in salary, just like all of the union employees currently get in their contracts. So that was included in this. If you go through, you'll see some of the small adjustments that were made. The one adjustment we did make to the school, it was not huge, it was, let's see, I think we brought them to 4 million even. I think they were 4 million and 69,000. So I think we did cut them 69,000, but considering the fact that in one budget, we're talking about 3.6 million, the other budget, we're talking about 4 million, that's a much, much better number. We also have other cuts that were still minor here. You're not gonna really be able to see them too much on this sheet of paper, because you don't have other things to compare them to. We did cut a couple things. We cut police just a little bit, we cut highway just a little bit. We pretty much went through all the departments evenly, cut a little bit, and tried to make it even throughout. I don't know if there's any specific questions I'd be happy to answer.
I'm sorry, could you point us to the lines that you funded for reserves? Are they in this budget, or are they...
Oh, you won't, you won't see them. They're imaginary. They, they do exist, John, but they're not on the sheet of paper you have.
Yeah, they'd be on the...
So it's, it's, capital would be 100,000, operating would be 100,000, and OPEB would be 40,000. So the remainder of that is 760,000. That goes into the budget, so that would bring our balance up to 15,308,626, 626, which I believe is at the bottom of your numbers down here somewhere.
It is.
Okay. That's where that came from. Any other questions?
I've got one question, going backwards, and I guess it's for Norris Gugnay. The cut is about $300,000 to Norris, is that what we're projecting?
And the FY '15, yes.
Is, what is the school committee? I mean, I know you were involved in all that. Is that something you're able to do if Prop 2 and 1/2 doesn't?
Well, you don't really have much of a choice, right? What do you mean? Is it something that we...
Well, I mean, there's other ways to mix the budget up and take from other departments and all that stuff. This is one, one cut. I'm just wondering what will happen.
Well, I, we meet tomorrow night, so to the, to the extent that there will be specifics that we can talk about, an implementation strategy, more on that tomorrow. From a, from a personnel standpoint, teachers average about 50,000, paraprofessionals average about 20,000. There are other groups of dollars that we would look at. Based on the, one of my questions for tonight was, what's the timing? What do you think the timing is on the Prop 2 and 1/2? So do we look at it and say, obviously, with the school choice, I know that's of interest, right? So how, what do we, what would be the strategy with that, so that you bridge yourself to the answer on Prop 2 and 1/2, without, without behaving like it didn't pass before you even ask, right? So it's kinda hard to repair what you undo, so what, from a timing standpoint, how long before you know on the override, and then you implement the, you know, the answer one way or another.
Well, it's a, it's a two-pronged, a crowd story. You know, you're gonna tell me, you get your authorization to do 2 and 1/2.
Understood, right?
So right off of that, we'll, we'll know that day whether it's a yea or nay.
Right.
Okay? If it's a yes, then we have to schedule the election.
Right. Based on, based on history, we probably get to the election part, but is that 45 days? Is it 60 days? I don't, whatever it is, it's, you know, I don't know if you've already got that scheduled before.
The sooner the better, so if we have to make the cuts, earlier in the year than not, into the second quarter like that, when you're on the state, the cut is 11%.
I didn't know from, from the rules standpoint, if it needed to be so long after the, after the annual or the special town meeting that was voted at, or how long the ramp time for an election is.
You know, I'm not sure. There's a timeframe, but I don't know what it is.
So that's sort of, so right, so when you're thinking, if you look at school choice and using more of that than you would otherwise, to get you to that vote, and then you take actions after the results of that vote, it's important to know how long that time is, right?
So do you think we should have a special time meeting after the vote?
No, I think you should have the, oh, no, as of the annual...
The annual's actually coming up on the 28th.
Annual, yeah, that's weeks away, right? But if you, if you need 60 days before you can have the ballot, right, then, you know, looking at the funding, and you, and the budget doesn't start till July, so you've got some time in that anyway, right? You don't know how long you need to make...
John, I'd say the end of July 1st of August is where we're looking at for an election.
So it's probably a month then, in the new budget?
I guess my question goes beyond that, because a bridge funding is easy relatively, because you got some school choice money. What happens if Prop 2 and 1/2 doesn't change? What's, what's the vision?
That's the hard question, right?
Yeah. And that's, that's what I don't think we know, looking at the budget, the structure now. I guess I'm, that's my part about not liking this, this thing, because I think we're hammering one, one area that we can't afford to hammer.
And, and basically, that's what it comes down to. You know, you, if you have a month, then I can see where you would, where you would fund yourself whole for that month, so to speak, so that you got to the answer, and then you have 11 months in which to enact whatever it is that needed to be enacted.
Is it, is it...
It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to, to create that fear, uncertainty, and doubt now, if you don't know what it is.
So is it fair to say that the, the school cost may be a little less in July than, say, October? Because, you know, kids are...
They would be less in October than they were in July.
But I mean, just in general, though, for a month-to-month basis, so if we had to fund the full month of July before the election was done...
I see what you're saying, but, so what you're saying, the expenses for the school...
Yeah.
There's, there's...
It's a little less.
Spread out over the, yeah, but it's, but you know what, it's to run the building, so it costs, you know, we don't air conditioning anyway, right? And we're not, and yeah, we're not heating it in July, but the payroll, the fixed costs are a year and a half or so, right?
John, one question I have...
Spread out generally over 12 months.
One question I have in regards to the wages is, your contract obligations, are you required to give them a payslip before the end of the year?
If, I'm not...
I think you are.
There was a reason that we did in the past, and I think it was in one of those 2 and 1/2 years, I'm not sure exactly on that.
I think you, I think, I might be wrong, but you need to check with Ferguson on that, because I think there's a timeframe, they have to be given a payslip, otherwise they come on payroll.
Yeah. What we've done, what we've done in the past, I think, and I, I think the last time we went through this, I was on finance, but it was payslip went everywhere. And that's, and that's whether, whether you know what you're gonna do or not know what you're gonna do, and I'm not arguing that we look right.
No, I do remember we had that issue before.
The other thing I've had, I believe, I have to be checked, but I think, then they collect unemployment, and then our unemployment costs go up.
Well, it doesn't matter, no.
That's gonna happen.
You gotta pay, I don't...
That's gonna happen no matter what, yeah.
Yeah.
David, you got a question?
If we end up doing it, yes.
David, you got a question?
Yeah.
No, that was, that was my point. I mean, factoring the cost of letting, letting people off and the cost of unemployment, what really is the resulting savings except, you know, deterioration of services in school?
I thought you had, yeah, the school budget is 95% wages.
I'm not, and I don't speak for our board tonight, but based on, and have been on the board five or six years now, based on our previous action, and again, I'm not speaking for the board, but we will look to protect, or have looked in the past to protect the environment, right? So to the extent that we maintain the same number of teachers, the same number of classrooms, and then we look to administration, we look to those other kinds of things to, to get us through rather than changing the environment, because it's the environment that makes it attractive. Some would say it's part of the engine of the town, and that would be the first place, you know, looking, looking to cut personnel would not be the first place we'd be looking at. So I didn't mean to indicate by the, by putting dollar figures that that would be our, that would be our first way. Our first way would be relatively concrete, would be, how do we get to the bridge to understand how the question gets answered, and then, and then, and then what will we do around the edges, right? And then where would we need to take it?
Do you get back to us after the meeting and with some thoughts maybe?
That's all we have, right? Sure.
Any other questions?
I mean, it's nothing, just one more. It's, you say get back, it's nothing different. We get the budget, and then we have, you know, town meeting ends, the budget gets approved, there's a question mark, right? And our, our work in the budget, we get, we get a proposal for the budget, we bring to you with a request, there's a number that we get from the town, and we go and usually cap, sign off on our budget, usually town meeting and, and 1st of July, 74, right?
I was thinking more if you came up with any ideas that we didn't, didn't know about.
Sure. Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm Linda Barstow, I'm a teacher at Norris, and I'm speaking not on behalf of Norris, but as a class parent here. If you're looking at $300,000, that's six teachers, that is classroom sizes that are currently 18 to 20 kids, going up to 25 to 32 students. I don't know if that's the type of environment we want our children and our grandchildren up to twenty-five to thirty-two students. I don't know if that's the type of environment we want our children and our grandchildren to be in. That's a very difficult classroom. Is that learning? And is that the environment that we have in our small town?
Our second budget is our Prop. Two and a half budget. Our Prop. Two and a half budget is based on the Prop. Two and a half override that we are asking the town for. The reason we're asking the town for this is because we'd like to maintain these services. We'd like to maintain the classroom sizes in the school. We'd like to maintain all of the police officers working on proactive service and not reactive service. We'd like to maintain highway department being available all week and being able to continue with their services. We'd like to maintain the ability for the library not only to be accredited, but also to be able to be open longer hours and to be able to offer more services and not to have to fundraise for fifty percent of their books every year because we can't completely fund them. We'd like to be able to offer the ability for folks to be in this building longer and to provide services to all of the residents. But unless we can get Prop. Two and a half to pass and get the support of all the residents in the community, including the support of the schools, the parents, the teachers, everyone who this affects, we're going to be stuck in this situation. We have been working as departments altogether in department head meetings. We worked last week. We're going to be meeting again this week. We usually only have a monthly department head meeting, but we're meeting every week right now until we complete Prop. Two and a half. We've been working with other communities and towns that have had recent Prop. Two and a halves that have passed. Arlington, Mass. had one in two thousand and eleven that passed. We're also working with Shrewsbury and other communities, any information we have. We're working right now and putting together fact sheets for each of our departments to show what current services we'd be able to offer, wouldn't be able to offer based on our current state of our budget in FY fifteen, as well as the services we'd be able to reinstate with the Prop. Two and a half if it were to be passed. And also things we'd be able to offer in addition to that with the Prop. Two and a half. These things are very, very instrumental, including the schools. And schools are at the heart of everybody. But unless we get everyone on board, residents, schools, teachers, everyone, parents, the elderly, the young, everyone, working class, those who don't work, those who are interested in the outdoors, those who are interested in the library, everyone on the same page and united front on this, we're going to be stuck in this situation where we're going to be having these cuts in the school. Where we're going to be having these cuts and you're not going to be able to come into town hall and have someone to be there and help you. Where you're going to be looking for a patrolman to go by and check out that person who's speeding by your street every day, but he's not going to be available because we don't have the money to be able to pay him for those services.
What is the, uh, the average cost increase on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home per quarter? Did we figure that out once?
We did a couple of weeks ago. Donna, do you remember? We don't have Vicki tonight. We feel at a loss without Vicki.
Something down.
That was on a five-hundred thousand.
Fifty thousand dollars.
A thousand. A thousand dollar home, but for a five-hundred thousand dollar overall.
The dollar seventy-seven is very bad.
For a million dollars?
No.
A million dollars is a dollar, is a dollar?
Dollar seven.
So a dollar seventy-six per mil. So whatever your house is worth.
For a thousand.
For a thousand. So for the average family in Southampton, you're looking at about three hundred dollars a month.
Oh.
A year.
That's not right.
A year.
A year, right. Three hundred dollars a year. So if you're, if you have kids in school like I do, if you have a low income like we do, if you don't live in a half-million-dollar house and you're looking at three hundred dollars a year, that's one Friday night that you don't order pizza in order to save these services. You have to look at it that way. And you can't, you can't look at it like, oh, they're raising my taxes because that's not it. You have to really put it in terms that people understand. And the only way that this is going to work is if the people that it affects, which is all of us, go out and vote. That's the only way this is going to work. And you have to tell your friends and you have to talk about it. And I know that sometimes it's taboo to talk about politics when you're on the baseball team, but guess what? If you don't, we're going to have some serious problems.
Any other comments from the select board? Jackie?
No. Thank you.
Finance?
Another comment, um, I'm going to have.
Hang on on my phone.
We've never had any money, never. Last year we thought we had five hundred thousand dollars and a week before we were setting the budget, we were, I won't say surprised, but we had to come up with five hundred thousand dollars. Of that free cash, we thought we were going to have for the Hampshire region, make the four-town commitment. And, uh, over the years, if we don't start addressing these fundings for the department in, in the best way we can, and right now we've exhausted every avenue of revenue. We can sell property. We've looked at a lot of avenues to increase revenue side of the issue. The point is, the governor, the government over the last ten years has cut local aid. They, they, uh, they, they level fund your local aid at, um, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but if it's there for ten years, that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars doesn't buy what it did the first year, ten years down the road. And we've been cut on local aid. It's in tune of eighteen, twenty percent some years, and we haven't got it back. Um, and they always talk about putting it in there, but when it comes down to it, it doesn't come here. Local aid has hurt us because we got dependent on it fifteen, twenty years ago, and we can't come back from it when they take it away from us because we have no other revenue stream to go after it and offset those monies. We are not a affluent town in the sense that we, we have a very high tax rate. I don't think our tax rate's very high compared to surrounding towns. I think that what we pay right now is, is a lot in some people's minds, and I think people on fixed incomes, it's, it's, it's an awful lot. But it's the choices between, do you want to see us going back to what we have thirty people in the classroom, uh, having, uh, three people in the highway department when you got eighty-five miles to row when ten years before you had only forty? You know, things have grown. Things are, are, are going up. Um, there's no inflation factor on any state aid that we ever get, but we have to live with inflation. And that's what's been killing us. Um, I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, the override goes through and we can solve this one forever. But if it doesn't go through, can you imagine what's going to be next year and the year after that? You know? It's not going to be just trying to make things work. You're going to talk about losing departments. You gotta stand your ground and start thinking about, um, you know, your quality of life that you want. Some people want the fire department. Some people want the fire and police department. Some people want their plows, plowed first thing in the morning. It's not going to be the same when things are cut. Okay? It's not going to be the same at all.
Well, I absolutely agree with you. Um, and, and I am glad that the select board is thinking in terms of how to sell this override, how to explain it to the public. And I'd like to say again, you've got to also remind them what will happen to those property values, should the town services be decimated? And they will be under these current budgets.
Any last comments from the departments?
Robert Floyd, fifteen East Street. Speaking of what Linda Summers says and going off on, on psychology of the article, four to two and a half percent override. There were discussion last week about putting it before the budget. Every moderator I spoke to, every research I've done feels it psychologically better to put it after the budget. So I'd like to hear some conversation.
Is it, I had a question. Is it possible to make it one and not one or the other so that, or is it possible to give a whole presentation and then vote on those? Because if you, if you give one and you say, okay, now let's pass it, and then you move to the next one, someone might change their vote. So is it possible to, before we start, do
Going back to what is going to be the budget and what's going to be the two and a half percent override on the warrant?
Well, Robert, tell me if I'm right or wrong. If we have the budget we have tonight with the cuts.
Yes.
As the only of this budget.
Yes.
All right. The override passes, we'll have to have another meeting to change that, those numbers, you know, right?
Yeah.
We'll have another town meeting to come back to reinsert those.
We'll have to have the election for the two and a half percent override.
So whether you have one or the other, you're going to come back.
That's what I was thinking. You would have to come back for another.
I mean, I remember.
I was hoping we could.
We have to balance the budget.
We can never get this happen.
Oh, we, we've been here.
We'll be back.
Yeah, yeah, we've been here. Bill will remember that. I remember it. We had to come back and we balanced the budget.
Yeah.
But we can't have a contingency budget in case.
You're talking about people override.
No, 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 no. I'm talking, um, all the budgets, all the line items are going to be addressed if the override goes through. You know, one way or the other.
I think you're right, Ed. I think the easiest thing to do is to pass the budget with the cuts.
Yeah.
Hope to then have a, an article in the, the town meeting warrant that talks about a two and a half override, the amount that we talked about, and then have the election. If the override then passes, then we could have a special.
No, I just, I'm not sure this is cast to stone, but on the other hand too, you could do the other way. If the override question passes, you can put the override budget in there, pass that. But if it fails, you're going to come back and cut those budgets.
Well, I was, I was thinking with John.
It doesn't matter which way.
Well, the over.
Am I right?
The overrides currently, I'm sorry, the override is currently in the budget, in the, um, I'm sorry, in the warrant as an article. It's a contingent proposition override. So in other words, if it fails, it just disappears. No, no, it just disappears. It goes bye-bye. So as long as we have the other budget already approved and in place, that one takes over as the dominating budget.
The one with the six percent cut?
Yes, yes. That one takes over. So if you have both of the articles there and the contingent one fails, at any point in the process, it just goes away. It's like it never existed in the first place.
But if the override passes at the town meeting and at the election.
Then that one takes over. That one becomes the dominating.
Passing two budgets. I don't know if you can do that.
So what you're saying, there's a contingency if then, you know, this happens.
But does it make more sense to pass the, the budget with the cuts first? So then when you're starting off, the start of the year, that's the budget you're working under? Because you don't want to be already spending money that you're going to have to cut back. I think you go with the budget cuts to begin with, have the election, have the vote on the override. If the override passes, they go back into a special and then refund back in.
What have other towns done? I don't know.
I feel like we're trying to reinvent the wheel here.
We can find out.
If someone's having an override in the town next door, how did they do it and why don't we just?
My experience is that they would have, if the override passed, they came back and adjusted the budgets with another meeting.
The last override that I remember from the floor was ninety-eight thousand dollars to fully fund the school. And based on that, the budget, that was what the budget was. So the budget was passed. It was part of the discussion. I think it was a, a second amendment within the amendment. It passed, it failed an election, and then after the election, the budget cuts came in versus starting with the budget cuts in the beginning so you know what you're dealing with. And if it doesn't pass, two and a half doesn't pass, you don't, you don't have to go back and read trains back whatever, sixty days, thirty days of budget that was overturned.
I, I have a solution that would resolve this. If you could call DOR, I'm sure they have experience in this.
Mm-hmm.
And Vicki and you talk to DOR and find out what other towns, because they're there for, to, uh, augment what we have to do.
When you have to vote.
Because otherwise, you're going to come in as an enforcer and tell us how to do it.
Seven days?
Posting.
We still have one more meeting, right?
You need to post it after tonight?
Yeah, we have to say the warrant.
We have, we only have to post it seven days ahead of time.
Right, but you mean next week is going to be less than seven days. Uh, so the concept was to finalize everything tonight so you could post it tomorrow.
We can always, you can always vote on a contingent upon amending X, Y, or Z based on council's comments.
Or you could post another meeting.
Council didn't have any commentary on the fact that both of those budget articles were there when I got it back from council today.
If you vote, I'm sorry.
And the only thing that she had, Pat, what's her last name? Cantor?
Cantor.
Cantor. The only thing she had recommended was actually switching the articles back to the original order, which was putting the FY fifteen budget first and doing the Prop. Two and a half second.
Just like Robert said.
That's what you're suggesting.
That's what I'm suggesting based on my research. People would like to see the numbers, see how hard you worked on the budget and before they're asked to increase what.
I guess that makes sense.
Is it possible to have before the annual town meeting a half-hour information session?
Yes.
That would be ideal if you know what people.
We're having one Thursday at six-thirty here.
Right.
And certainly as we've had in the past, can have it before. The concept is to have it in another section of the room so the setting up doesn't interfere with the meeting.
Just keep it fresh in their memories, go from this to the next vote.
So you can't have, you can't give a presentation during the meeting?
Well, someone has to present the article so they can talk about it. She's, someone else is going to stand up and talk about, he's going to defend his article. And I think it's fair to have finance and the town administrator to defend the article.
At what point do they defend the article?
When it's brought to the floor.
So when Article Two comes up, if someone wanted to present something, that would be the time to do it.
When a motion is made on the article and the question is divided on the budget, each section is discussed and voted on, then we go to the next section of the budget that's discussed fully, then voted on. And when it's all done, all the sections of the budget are finalized and voting, there's no need to vote again on all the sections. And then we go into the two and a half percent override.
So you do the same thing you just did here.
During the, during the meeting. Okay, that's all I want to know.
If you presented the FY fifteen budget at the fourteen million dollar level as one article, and then presented the difference amount of a billion or whatever change as the next article with the explanation that goes along with it, and then have a special meeting where you present that, if it passes, then you present the new budget. That way everybody kind of leaves the meeting knowing what work they have to do before the next special meeting will produce the final budget. Does that make any sense?
No, we'll vote on, we'll just vote on something.
Pardon?
We'll end up voting on something, either FY, the fourteen million dollar or the fifteen million dollar two and a half override.
So you, I, I guess I'm confused. If you vote on, if you, if you put the FY fifteen budget in at the fourteen million with all the crazy cuts, and that's passed, and then you move on to the two and a half, and that passes, does the first one just go away?
Well, you need it in the election.
You need the election to.
And as long as the election passes, then the first one just goes away. You don't have to do anything different.
Do you, do you, are you on your vote for your, um, second budget, your two and a half percent?
Okay, that's right.
Can you clarify that too tomorrow?
I can, I can clarify some more, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody?
I'd like to make one comment. You know, last week I wasn't here. I was ill and I'm sorry I didn't attend, but I watched it on, on television. And first of all, you can't see the numbers, but you guys are great.
Television?
Yeah, you can't read them. And so people that are out in the audience are listening, I'm sure, but there's so many numbers coming at them. And one of the things that might help with an override, and obviously we need one, and I hate to raise anybody's taxes, but I think really getting this tight and saying, okay, these are how many officers we're not going to have, or this is to maybe five points. Because it's overwhelming for the whole, you know, all these numbers?
Yeah.
And to publicize it in the, in the newspaper, to put it, you know, you've done such a wonderful job, which is why I think we had so many people at this election. You helped. Thank you. But I mean, I'm just saying, just clarify it. Get it really tight so that people understand exactly what we're going to lose.
We're working with fact sheets with each of the departments and they're turning those in on Friday, on Thursday. So we'll have a better idea of more specific bullet points, as Jackie puts it, as to what's happening with the, as a result of the FY fifteen budget and what can be restored as a result of the Prop. Two and a half.
Can that be, can that's to one report?
Um, we can.
Different pages going on?
Um, yeah, we can see what we can do. I think they'll be utilized, um, we can utilize them in different ways, but it would be nice to have all the different pieces of information to be able to have as a compilation.
We couldn't afford a postcard, could we?
No, we, we have to figure out what our, the fiscal.
We can't.
I know.
We have to figure out what our regulations are too as to how involved we can get with the Prop. Two and a half, um, campaign, so to speak. So we're working on that as we.
Maybe an article, maybe the Republican or the Gazette will do something and get the numbers in that way.
Rebecca and, from the Gazette and Mary from the Republican on mass lives, post, um, mass lives news information are both awaiting my call on Thursday for further information on our Prop. Two and a half.
Right.
Uh, what they had been waiting for and what we have discussed when I've seen them both a couple of occasions now is that I told them that we were waiting to make sure that we had a united front, we had a united message to share. Until we did so, we wanted to wait because we wanted to make sure we had one piece of information to pass on. We wanted to have a united piece of information. We're also going to Robert's informal session on Thursday night. So we'll have more information to share. That's being broadcast, I believe.
Yes.
So people at home will have it. Once we finish with the broadcast, we'll post it on Facebook so people can get the information. That way, the Facebook page links to the Twitter page, which links to the homepage, so people can get the information on one of different, many different facets, faucets, facets. I'll get the word right correctly at some point, facets. Well, I'm spelling in my head and not pronouncing it correctly, so.
Can we use town property to put up?
I don't know. I'm still working on it. Um, the easiest way to get to the answer, I thought, was to actually talk to towns who have done this recently because they kind of would have the best chance of looking into the regs most recently. So Arlington, Shrewsbury. Arlington actually has a bunch of information they're sending me in the morning. Shrewsbury, I didn't get a chance to call yet today, but I will. And then I'm not sure.
I think they just didn't want to. I think they're all, well, they know the rules around, you know, here pretty good. And, yeah, I think I'm going to be very helpful.
I'll give them a call as well. I was holding off on them though, only because theirs was focused on the educational piece alone, as opposed to a lot of the other towns have. as opposed to a lot of the other towns have more information. Yeah, they should be able to answer some of those.
You know, I really don't think you can spend any municipal money on this.
I, I think you're right.
And, uh, people can't work on town time promoting this either. So, you know, it's got to be, you know, very basic information you can do when we're sitting here, what the facts are.
Any other questions from the audience, comments? All right. Is that everything, Heather?
Uh, the next thing we need to do is the articles if there's no more questions on the budget. And just to let you know, the articles have changed a little bit. This has been through town council once at this point. Um, there's a couple more things that I have questions on that I'd like to follow up with Pat on. I was talking to Liz earlier, if it's possible, after we go through all these, if we can possibly have this approved pending further, legal approval.
So we already talked about.
Are we switching two and three?
Yeah, why don't we do, do we have a motion to do that?
I make a motion to switch Articles Two and Three on the annual town meeting warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Now, we've gone through all these before. Are there any other changes?
Yes. Okay, so if we flip through, let's see. I apologize to those in the audience, they don't have a copy of this. It's like a seventeen-page document. Budget, this doesn't permit copies. If you get down to, let's see, the bylaws are still the same. You get down to Article Number Ten, the Report of the Community Preservation Committee. This article has totally changed. It used to be a piece for every single thing that was going to be transferred over. The reason this changed is because apparently town council has been redoing the formatting of this article itself in all of their communities that they work with, and they want to have it worded differently. Not only do they want to have it worded differently, but it appears they want to combine all the different articles into one article. I don't know how I, how I feel about this one, but it's town council's piece that did this. I didn't do this, Pat Cantor did. So I will further work with Pat Cantor and figure out what we need to do with these, but these are all the pieces of this one article.
Did they give a reason why they did it?
She said they just changed the formatting of it recently.
When was that agreed with the?
I mean, town council.
Did the state change it, or are you saying the council?
Town council has recently advised all the communities to change the formatting of the language. Because I had copied our language from last year, verbatim, into what we had used. Um, the only other thing you'll see on here that's different is the very last one at the very bottom. It says, estimated revenues from undesignated reserve, forty thousand dollars to the public safety complex account. Now, that is still pending the, pending approval. Charlie is meeting with the CPA, I believe, tomorrow. So provided that they get approval, that was the best guess. But again, that's one of those things that if we can get, I don't know however the vote would want to go to have it, so it's pending.
We would have to amend it from the floor if that part of it gets dropped out.
Okay.
So it'd be amended on the floor.
CPA says, no, then we can drop that. So the rest of these could pass. So I just want to read the articles for people to see.
Do you want to give people a minute to clear?
There's people still in the audience at home that would love to hear.
Get down on your knees.
Charlie, sit down.
So this new format, the Community Preservation Committee, has put everything under one article. So it's concerned that if someone's against one part of it, some good stuff that may want to pass, so it may get, may get kind of sticky, but we're looking at it. So what's in this right now is ten thousand dollars for Edwards Public Library for preservation of documents, historical documents. Also fifteen hundred dollars for the Veterans Grave Officer for restoration of Revolutionary War and Civil War veterans monuments. Another historical aspect is fifty, is five thousand for the Veterans Grave Officer for the purchase of some, ten flat markers for veterans' graves. Another historic apart is, uh, Clark Park. And twelve thousand seven hundred dollars being used for the South Hampton Youth Association for renovations of the, the small ball field that's on Clark Park. Something about the backstop has to be fixed. I think it's leaning to one side. Uh, open space, five thousand dollars from the Conservation Commission for improvements of the Littmore Conservation Area. Twenty-five hundred dollars for the Conservation Commission for a hiking map of Woolhill and Zipta Conservation Areas by Trail Science in Woolhill. Ten thousand dollars from the Undesignated Reserve Operating Expenses for CPA, which is the earlier that you did. Then the last bit that Heather just spoke of, for the safety complex. So those are the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight parts of Article Ten that are currently in there from CPA. Yes, Rob?
Robert Floyd, I will divide that question if it's all in one article. It's just too many interests, too many items to go yea or nay all in one vote. And historically, it's worked having them suffered. So if it is one article, I will divide it up to me.
Article eleven and twelve, thirteen, fourteen, I think it was.
You want me to skip down to the next one that changed?
Yeah.
All right, let's see. Actually, number thirteen is new. Um, this was in last year's. It's Transfer Ambulance Fee Account. Uh, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of ten thousand dollars to fund the police department wages for EMS ambulance-related expenses. If you have any questions, I believe the chief's still here on this article. Okay, it's something we do every year. Apparently, our police are also trained to be first responders. So we give them EMTs. So we give them.
They all have the valid licenses and whatnot? They still have valid EMT licenses?
What are you saying? They don't have them?
They all, I'm saying they still do, right?
Yes.
They still have valid EMT licenses. Okay.
In fact, we added them no more.
Okay.
So that's a different article from last week. We didn't realize it wasn't in there. It was an oversight. So we added that. And then if you go down to, um, page seven, you'll see operating appropriations. We changed something by adding something here, and we took one out of capital appropriations. This was something I alluded to earlier when we were talking about the police department's budget. So the police department originally had a capital item for thirty-three thousand dollars for a police cruiser. Uh, we discussed with the police chief for quite a while about it. And as he advocated last week, he's in favor of, you know, if he has to make a decision between two things, you know, items or personnel, he's going to opt to keep personnel. So that was his decision when we did the budget. And he said, you know, I'd really like to keep the personnel. Let's get rid of the cruiser. Can we do this instead? So instead of doing thirty-three thousand dollars transfer for a police cruiser this year, what he asked to do is he asked to put an article on the warrant to appropriate thirty-three thousand dollars from the Operating Stabilization Fund to the police wage account to recover the, some of the money that was taken out as a result of the cuts. So instead of thirty-three thousand dollars going into as a police cruiser, it'd be thirty-three thousand dollars going back into the police wages to help recover. Now, he understands this is a possibility that it may not pass. And if it doesn't pass, he's going to be stuck with even lower wages for the police department than he already has.
So you cut eighty, it looks like eighty thousand for wages, as it is now, right?
Well, you're looking, you're looking at wishlist versus already cut.
Like seventy thousand, so, or cut, eighty or seventy thousand cut. And then, so this will come back, so it'll still be forty thousand.
His entire budget took about a sixty thousand dollar hit after the already two percent cuts.
Fifty-two.
Sixty, sixty-two.
Five hundred and thirty-three dollars and nineteen cents, right?
We didn't get to coins. I don't like coins. We round up. So that, you see that article now, an oper, um, Operating Stabilization Fund. Uh, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of thirty-three thousand dollars to the police department wages from the Operating Stabilization Fund, and you do no lo, you no longer see a police cruiser in the capital lines.
Just so I'm clear, I forgot your question answered. There's a, in the line up for wages, there's a fifty-two thousand dollar cut. So this will go back in, so it will be.
Sounds vibrating.
Yeah, it's fairly, huh? Uh, this will be back in there, so there'll only be a cut of roughly twenty thousand.
Thirty, I think it was.
Oh, it's, it's fifty-two here, chief, according to what the figures you guys, and thirty-three here.
So it's a total of sixty-two thousand, so this would put thirty-three thousand back into wages.
Uh, I'm going to go here where it says fifty-two, so, but I guess the real question is thirty-three to go back into that difference.
Yeah.
So there'd be a minimal amount. And if it doesn't, the, the worst would be the fifty-two or sixty-two. It wouldn't exacerbate that.
And if that doesn't happen, then we'll, we'll have no choice but to lay the police officer off. We're already going to be cutting back on patrol, cutting back on shift coverage, even with what we have, even with transferring that thirty-three in there, that's simply to prevent playing the police officer off.
I just want to make sure it wasn't layered on top of the cut already. Okay.
That was another example of working together with some of the departments to maximize the potential of our budget and what we need to do with the funds, and having the departments on board. That's, that's all I have, I believe, for the amendments.
That's all the changes?
Yes, sir.
All right, so did we take a vote on this last time or not?
Uh, we took a vote on just moving things around last time.
All right, can I take, I'll take a motion to approve for the articles for Liz's annual, this year's annual town meeting.
One.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
So we'd like to have this posted.
Now, here's a question for you. Does this include the budget or not include the budget, and do you need to vote on the budget separately?
We'll vote on the budget separately then.
I don't know the answer to the question.
I don't either, so I'll vote on both of them.
Usually includes the budget because.
Robert believes it includes the budget because it's part of the warrant.
Yeah, it's, it's Article, it'll be Article, the budget that we're looking at is Budget Fifteen, and that will be Article Two.
So it would be FY-15 and the FY-15 Prop Two and a Half budget, both of them.
So we'll get this posted tomorrow?
Uh, we will run it through town council for those few questions.
And when will the constable's post this?
As soon as I bring it to the constable.
Babe, when would you like this handed to you?
We have seven days, you know, um, so I mean, uh, I think there's any time up until next Monday at the latest.
What's a convenient time for you?
Soon as it's better.
So we'll get this directly to the chief.
I'll say well.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is it six o'clock or six-thirty for your information meeting?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, thanks.
So I think the next thing is.
We're going to sign it, don't we?
Yeah, you can always.
Do you have a, do you have a copy, get out?
Oh. Oh, I didn't write on the last page.
I've got one here too. Only one.
Do you have a clean copy?
Yeah, how many copies of yours do you have?
Uh, just, just one, spr. Do you need to post, you just need one signed copy?
I need one with the original signatures on it.
You just have to change the first page with that, two articles off the screen. All right, so, um, there's a PCF, but these guys are here, so why don't we just talk to these guys here because they're here?
Yes.
Okay. Charlie, you're up.
Okay, the good news is the hearing I made first relative to Maple Street was moved. And it appears that they'll take their final vote at eight twenty-second, I believe. And then they're going to record it at the Registry of Needs in Maple Street underneath the town hall, whom no longer exist.
That's positive.
And I will check booking page of the Registry of Needs at the beginning of June to make sure that actually happened. That said, the other part of the report from Copeland Page was that we have to authenticate the fact that the selectman had control of this building and the fire station. Through the town clerk's office, we were able to find the town meeting votes that made that happen. A little curiosity, one of the town meeting votes in nineteen forty-six, if memory serves, was to tear down the present fire station.
Too surreal?
That's very interesting.
The schoolhouse.
All right, so.
Which is the present fire station.
So when was that voted on?
It was nineteen forty-six.
It was a binding vote?
It was a binding vote of the town, and then two years later, they changed their mind and decided to make it the fire station.
Well, there's heaven, might have been.
Yeah.
So we've had a long history with that building of its coming and going.
Coming and going, busy going.
Uh, in two thousand, the town voted to take this building and transfer it from the school department to the Board of Selectmen. So out of the three issues the town attorney brought up, the Maple Street one that's on the path to be cleared up, the building issues appear to me that we have documentation. The only thing left out there is the panel search requirements that they were suggesting. What I'd like to do with that whole piece is wait until June, after town meeting, everything else. This committee, your board, get together, we re-review what Copeland Page has and decide what we're going to do for the little piece that's there. Now, but we're, we're getting this cleaned up. It is. The articles for town meeting, as you know, we're going to the Preservation Commission tomorrow night to see if there's some possibilities there. Uh, we reviewed the statute relative to that, and they include historical districts in that, which the fire station in that area is a historical district. I don't know how it's going to be viewed, but I'm optimistic that there might be funding out of them when we take into the feasibility study. Bear in mind that if we don't do the feasibility study, we're pretty much stagnant, dead. We can't move any further with this thing until we eventually get the feasibility study done.
Are you meeting CPA tomorrow?
Yeah.
What time?
Five-thirty.
I heard there's a, a select board member that was interested to be a more active part of your committee.
She made a statement about the fact that we were a fun group. That seemed to be harassing each other at great limits.
Would you, would you accept that person into your coven?
I don't know if that person would fit well with that group. We're willing to give it a shot, aren't we?
Yeah, I would be honored.
Do we have a motion to appoint Jackie?
I would make a motion to appoint Jackie to the Public Safety Complex Committee.
Do I have a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Shouldn't we have a full vote?
Well, no.
We're not charging nothing. Don't figure that out yet.
No, you go, Jackie. Any other issues, Charlie?
The other articles, tapes of the five thousand dollars for survey appraisal? We have to do that. As simple as that. We're, we're neck deep into the perk tests and all the rest of that, so we got to get that done.
Now, is he getting his property appraised from his standpoint? Is he hiring his own appraisers?
My understanding is he's looking for just our appraisal.
Okay.
He's keeping this extremely low-key. Uh, we are looking at Backland. Uh, I gave Heather a sketch of the map, so if you want to see it, she actually has it. It's about six tenths of an acre. Where that's going to come out, now it's pretty impressive, but that gives you an idea.
There's no funds, no?
No funds at all. And there's sufficient land left that he has funds for only one.
Oh, that's when they work up to the survey.
Yeah, because whatever, gone through his attorneys with that, throw to the land and that. So at this point in time, a lot's going to depend on what happens tomorrow night. And that'll set the tone for our town meeting.
What, what are the articles that we have on? How do we read?
From left to right.
Doesn't matter.
There's, um. There you go, now.
There's one for five thousand dollars, and then there is one for forty thousand. The forty thousand one pertains to the CPA. The five thousand dollar one, I believe, comes from capital.
And we'll see what happens tomorrow.
For the purpose of, I believe, it's.
The appraisal.
It's the appraisal and the survey. We have to do the survey, we've got to do the description for the deed.
Could you please reiterate the, the reason why we need a new complex because of the safety issues? And not just the fact about the equipment, but also the human factor of how unhealthy that building is?
Both structures are presently housing people that could be put in jeopardy because of the degradation and. of the degradation and condition of the buildings. I can't more simplify it than that.
You have to do better for better categories. This was renovated for detonation.
This was voted on nineteen forty-six, to be torn down by the town.
You're starting to act there, you're wild.
But two years later, we saw the value.
May I keep you?
But so you.
No, I can get another one.
They got more?
Yeah, she'll give me one.
They got more to print another one out.
I don't know what.
I mean, the reality of this is, even though we're talking about feasibility studies and stuff, we're still a number of years off before you actually have the facilities.
Takes a long time.
Well, this is, this is not, you know, we do the feasibility study this year, and next year, we turn the key and walk in.
Yeah, but all the parts are coming together. I mean, the, the Maple Street stuff, the deed stuff needed to be done.
Yeah.
And that's, that was for you guys.
Yeah, but that was for the town, and that was sort of, and that was sort of found along the way.
That's true. It was the problems we ran into.
Right.
But I really feel that we want a clean deed to the whole place.
Right.
So that when you do apply for a grant, that it is done.
Yes.
So, nobody can dig anything up and say, hey, you can't do this because, and it takes two years to get it done. Now, we've been at this, what, three years?
Three years now. So, this committee's been functioning, uh, and we started off originally going through all the town properties and everything else, trying to get some idea of what we needed and where we should put it. Uh, the reality of this is, it is moving, but if you were to look week to week, you wouldn't see anything. But if you look every six months, you can see a lot of progress has been made. And to be quite candid, we've been doing this on the chief.
I got to tell you, going back to the beginning, John Kearns of the law.
He did?
He did.
He was chair.
Yep.
He was chair, but he was like, clearly his clerk. It was clerk, his clerk.
Now, I have another clerk.
Oh, begins with a J.
Close.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Good luck tomorrow night.
Okay.
All right. All right. Heather, will we not?
We must need a, a article from here.
Do you have a PCF for a law?
I think I can save you two thousand dollars.
Yeah, what you got there, Larry?
My worst hamster car right here. Call tomorrow. We will, I cut that in half.
Mary does not wish to be.
Oh, it's called.
Yeah, it's so called.
The PCF is to reduce the date. Two dollars stipend for that title. Following the reduction date from nineteen thirty to eighteen thirty-five.
Do you have a motion? I'll make a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Fair?
Aye.
Any, any else we need to take votes, or?
We need to go into executive session.
All right.
It's, item on your agenda, uh, well, I don't know if there's any open.
Open time for the public, George, Robert?
Robert Floyd, Tom Moderator, just reporting on my activities today. The warrant was not posted for the town election similar to two thousand and seven. Peter Kococ is validating the election in Boston with legislation, which means the election itself is invalid. Uh, with, working with Heather today, Copeland and Page, they were able to present to me, because I needed reassurance, there's a difference between an election being invalid and the election results being valid, being valid until overturned, if and only if by a court of law. That being explained to me, that being shown case study, I then went ahead and saw where the town clerk, who was in free, just where everybody else is. So, the validation of the election itself will take up to three months, Peter Kococ predicts, and the governor will validate it, and what Copeland and Page also said is, they see no reason why it will not be validated, so, it's a matter of time, so.